During the high school class project, my teacher told me it's unrealistic being a CEO. It's been my dream to be a CEO since I was 10. So I told her, it is realistic. Follow me on my journey to learn what it takes to become a CEO.
Hey guys, welcome to another episode of the Realistic CEO Podcast. Today I'm here with Jose Delgado. How are you doing today?
Doing very well. Thank you for having me, Michael.
Thank you for being able to come on today. So the first question I'm going to ask you is, what was your dream to becoming a city council?
Oh, my journey to become a city councillor, uh, that's an interesting one. So it's funny because I didn't initially start out in government. When I was in college, I was a mass communications major and my dream was to move to New York City and work in the entertainment industry. And um, I graduated from college in 2008. And for many of those who know what happened in 2008 is when the economy and the great recession happened and the economy collapsed. And so, you know, folks were looking for me to go back to New York, but it was too expensive. Couldn't get a job paying well enough to live there. So I decided to stay home in Springfield, get involved. Um, actually I got involved with AmeriCorps Vista and, and community work. Actually volunteered a little bit for Barack Obama's campaign, knocked on doors in New Hampshire. And so that's kind of what started my slow but long trek to city council. I got involved in community work, worked with the local chamber of commerce. And then from there, uh, was picked up, uh, you know, by the mayor of Springfield as an aide. And got more involved in community work like that. And then later on, a couple of jobs later, ended up working for Governor Baker, Governor Charlie Baker. And uh, worked with him for two years. And once um, I left that, I had a lot of folks over the last 10, 15 years in terms of my community experience, asking me to run for city council. And I was always like, nah, I'm not the guy. I like to be behind the scenes. I like to, you know, I like the behind the scenes work. I don't care about being the face. I don't care about the credit. I just like to do the work. And it got to a point last year where I was just, just watching direction the city was going. There was two openings on the city council and I had a number of folks reach out to me, kind of just like, you should run, you should run, you have experience. And so I did it. And I ran and lucky enough, my first time around got on the city council at large at that. At large, so in Springfield, there's 13 city councillors. Eight of them are at ward, which just means they represent different sections or neighborhoods of the city. And then there's five at large. And so I was blessed to, to, to get one of the at-large seats, which is essentially running the whole city. So yeah, so that's my long answer to my journey to Springfield city council.
So how are we able to go from wanting to be into the entertainment industry to becoming one of like the main people for the city council?
That is an interesting question. Um, my initial kind of wanting to get into the entertainment industry uh, was because I wanted to go to New York City. I wanted to learn what they do. And I wanted to bring that stuff back to Springfield. So there was always some type of, how do I help Springfield? And through the entertainment part, it was like, we've got a lot of talented people out here. Whether it be, you know, a lot of musicians, you know, you've got great athletes, you've got a lot of talent in Springfield. But because we're such a smaller city, we don't get recognized. So part of the idea was like, go to New York City, learn that. Learn what I can, bring that back to Springfield and, and do it that way. Obviously the economy collapsed and I needed to find a job and make money. And I just kind of fell into the community work and I, you know, fell in love with that and the rest is history. I just kept doing it. And never looked back.
So when the economy dropped and you're like, man, I can't afford to live in New York anymore. Like, how were you able to just like push through that minor setback?
That's a great, great way to phrase it as a minor setback. Cause when I was in New York City, I was broke. I um, I was fortunate enough, I have an aunt that lives in, in, in the Bronx. And so I stayed with her, but I had to help, you know, help her a little bit with the rent. And um, I ran out of money. So in New York City, like it's so expensive. People work, they hustle, they're working like three jobs over there. And so what I would do when I wasn't doing my intern stuff is I would like help people move. Like, hey, can, you know, anybody got like, you know, you gotta move somewhere, you give me a hundred dollars. And I would literally move stuff up, you know, eight flights of stairs type of thing, just for a hundred bucks. Just because, you know, that's what I needed to do to survive. Um, I never really had lunch in New York City because I was always broke. There was a free popcorn machine on the, on the building that I was at in the 42nd floor. So I ate popcorn was every day for lunch. Um, so when I think about that struggle, but I made it work, right? I made it work. And when I talk about, you know, the great recession, when I was able to live at home on my mom's, so that helped out a little bit. But I still needed to look at it as a minor setback, like what do I need to do to, to get above this? How can I show people my worth, right? It was tough getting a job back then because a lot of companies were laying off people. So here's a recent grad, right? No experience, right? But I have a college degree, right? And you know, it, people with, you know, years of experience were obviously beating me out because they had it. And so I had to figure out, I actually worked for free just to show what I can do. Um, I volunteered and I ended up doing AmeriCorps Vista, um, which is, which is a federal organization that essentially folks work in the communities that they serve and they live on the poverty level essentially, and they show what they're gonna do. So that's kind of how I got my start is I had to work for free, had to show what I can do. And then people started noticing, hey, like, this kid's smart, this kid's got some talent and people started recruiting me from there. But the mindset would always like, this is temporary, this is temporary. As frustrated as it was, I applied for so many different jobs. And I would always get the no's and the no's and the no's. You don't have experience. I'm like, well, how am I supposed to get experience? If you don't give me an opportunity to show what I can do. So, um, but I'm just blessed to have stayed the path and, and kind of get over that minor setback.
So when you're able to get over that setback and be able to work for free, show your worth, when you were in that moment, like what was the thought process of, yeah, I can make it out?
I think for me, it was just survival mode. It was just like, just show what I can do and have, you know, have faith that, that me showing what I can do will lead to a better opportunity. So it was just kind of having faith, having faith in myself. I knew I was a smart kid. I knew, um, I just wanted an opportunity. I knew I would be a hard worker. I mean, you know, and so for me, it was just a matter of time before something caught on.
So being a leader inside of your community, what are some important traits that you need to be a good leader?
Important traits. Obviously I think you need to be able to listen. And when I say listen, it's not just listen to hear people and not always be responsive, but listening to understand. I think a lot of times with folks, we listen, but we're not actually like hearing people, right? We're just, we're listening. So I think for me is listening to understand. In politics, nobody, usually you're never going to have people, not everybody's gonna, you know, see those things the way you do, right? So you also have to be able to see other viewpoints. And try to understand where that viewpoint or where that person, individual is coming from. And so I think as a leader, I think we should be able to listen, learn. And then once we are able to kind of dissect the information, it's like, all right, what do we do with that information? How do we act upon that? And so, but I think listening and communication skills are probably the most important.
I've noticed in every single interview, every time I ask that question, listening and communication are always like the main things. Yeah. So like, why is that so important to you?
For me, why listening is so important? Because I think in, particularly in today's society, I think we're really quick to make quick judgments based off of an interaction, based off of a comment or based off of, I think we're very just reactive right now. And I think sometimes we need to take a step back. Even sometimes from ourselves, somebody might say something, I might get pissed off or whatever, but it's like, sometimes I'm like, all right, take a step back from my own personal shoes. Did that person say that intentionally? You know, so for me, it's really about understanding. I'm also just, my brain is very analytical. So I analyze everything. And so for me, I'm not the type of person that's just going to jump and make a response right away. I'm gonna, I'm gonna sit with the analyze it. Sometimes it's better not to say anything, right? And so, um, for me, that's, you know, it's important. And I think for any relationship, I think communication is important, right? And yeah, so that's interesting to hear that other people say that, which makes sense. But I think, you know, for me, that's, that's what's helped me out throughout my career. Listening, learning from other people, and then like I said, taking that information and doing with it what, what I do with it, right? So.
And every time I asked the follow-up question, everybody said that answer as well. So it's like, yeah. It's like the same, same thing from everybody says like the same exact response as you, like almost like word for word, like.
Wow. Yeah. That makes me feel good. I mean, that makes me feel like I'm in good company then if, if I'm, I'm not going the wrong way. All right.
So from being a leader, like how are you able to make sure that you're leading people the right way?
How I'm leading people the right way? You know, it's funny because the word leader, um, you know, I've never really saw myself as a leader. I just saw myself as somebody who tries to do the right thing. And tries to help people. Uh, but I've never categorized myself as a leader. I think, um, so you know, your question is how do you lead people the right way is, you know, I think it's, it's to the original point of the communication piece, but it's, is trying to understand where people are coming from and what's their motivation. Cause you can tell one person, one thing, and they might take it in the next person, they might not take it the same way. It's, it's almost like a family, right? You've got brothers or sisters or whatever. And some families, not every sibling is the same exact person, right? So you gotta learn how to deal with each individual person. So for me, it's, it's, you know, when you're a leader is understanding what motivates that person. And how do you, how do you build them up so that they can be the best person they can be? And I think when I think about it from my perspective lens, you know, when I go back to like not being able to have a job, it's like, I wanted mentors, I wanted, I wanted to learn, I was hungry to learn. And so for me, I know what would work for me. It's like, give me an opportunity and I'm going to learn and I'm going to show you that I appreciate your investment and your time into me. And so I think some of that, you know, when, you know, me as a leader, right, is, is, is how do I help make other people better? Right? And how do I find ways to connect with them so that they can see the value in themselves? Cause I think there's a lot of, a lot of us who, who get stuck. And you mentioned a temporary setback or a minor setback, right? But there's some people that think those minor setbacks are just walls that they're never going to get over. So it's like, how do you find that piece of motivation in people to, to push them along without pushing too hard? Cause if you push too hard, it could also have the opposite effect. So when I look at it from a city council perspective is there's a lot of different needs. And you have to juggle all the different, you know, perspectives of, of your residents, right? And your community, your business community. It's like, one decision here might upset somebody over here. So it's like, how do you balance that? And there's no real right or wrong answer. But when you come at it, at the heart of what is best for, you know, all the people and what you think is the best in terms of right now, then you know, that's the way I look at it. It's like, what, what decision can I make to better people right now that could potentially have long-term, you know, effects?
So let's say maybe somebody might not agree with your decision. Like what are some ways that you're able to like, maybe like kind of let them like see what your thought process is?
I try to break it down for them. Um, you know, I've had already, you know, couple votes or people are like, why did you vote like that? And it's like, well, let me explain to you from my viewpoint. I tend to have a very long-term look at things. So again, I'm a very analytical person. So I don't just look at something, what's it, what's it going to be right now? But it's like, what's the impact five, like a couple of years, five years, 10 years down the road? And so for me, you know, not everybody thinks like that. Some people think in very short term. Um, and so it's like, try to show my perspective and break it down and say, hey, you know, this is why I voted like that. I understand where you're coming from. It doesn't mean that I completely disagree with it. But at this moment in time, this is how I'm voting for it because here's what I feel the impact will be long-term. And some people are receptive to that. Some people don't care. They're like, nope, you voted against it. You're an enemy, you're enemy number one. And that's just kind of how it works sometimes. Um, and so your hope is that you can get people that are able, again, to step aside from themselves and see it, not just from their shoes, but from a global perspective.
So when you have people like just disagreeing and like saying you're, you're wrong and all that, how are you able to keep your mindset positive?
That's a tough one. Um, cause sometimes you do get upset and you're like, man, like you're not listening, right? Like, but you can't, you gotta, you gotta be better than, than the person in front of you, right? And so, so you don't, the hard part is not letting somebody else bring you down to their level, right? And so for me is just keep a positive mindset and know that in my heart, I made the best decision with the information I had. You know, and sometimes, you know, I'm not perfect. I might've made the wrong decision and I might learn from that. You know, maybe six months or a year from now, like, you know what? I, I miscalculated that. Like I thought it would be this way and it's not. And it's okay to be wrong too. But at that moment, not get upset. I mean, you gotta have a lot of patience. Patience, um, yeah, I guess that's the only way they can do it. I, I do have a lot of patience. And find outlets for yourself for when you are frustrated and when you are, when you are feeling it, find an outlet for yourself to, to decompress. Cause I think we all need that. I think we need to find our own avenues to decompress and not let what others do bring us down.
So earlier you said, when you were younger, you wish you had a mentor that can guide you. So like, what are some ways that somebody can find a mentor for themselves?
So the way I used to do it is I used to look at people that I wanted to emulate, right? I would look at whether, you know, some of my earliest mentors were just people on TV. Like I would watch TV. I mean, I was a big Fresh Prince fan and, and watching Fresh Prince of Will Smith and how goofy and funny and charming. I'm like, all right, like he's cool. He's got swag, right? Like watching stuff like that. You know, I was a big wrestling fan. So Dwayne The Rock Johnson was, was another one. So like, you know, from, from that perspective is seeing things that you want to be like. Um, and then, you know, in the, in real world, a lot of my earliest mentors were women, actually. I didn't have a lot of, of male figures. I mean, I had my, my, my dad who I never lived with, but he was around. He was a hard worker and I get a lot of that. So I would say my dad is obviously a fig, a father figure. Have an older brother that's a father figure. Or a big mentor figure. But then it was like trying to find people in my communities. We grew up kind of poor, right? So it's like, all right, like I want to make money. I want to be successful. What does that look like? Who emulates that? So trying to find people, a lot of times people are like, oh, that's cool. You know, it's cool. And they turn you down. But some of my earliest mentors were women. And uh, people that gave me opportunities, a lot of women in the beginning. And um, you know, then I had a mentor when I graduated from college. When I couldn't find a job, actually Carlos Gonzalez, who's a state rep now. He was one of the ones that gave me an opportunity, actually showed me the community side of, of Springfield. Cause I didn't know anything about politics. When I was in college, I just didn't want anything to do with politics. I'm like, there's a bunch of people that lie, whatever. And he was one of the first ones that like showed me this new world. And I'm like, oh shoot, there's the mayor. Oh shoot, there's city council or so and so. The people that you would see on like TV. And it was like this, like new world. And he gave me an opportunity. He also was one that pushed me to think positive thoughts. He would call it positive voodoo. And if you ever watched this, he's probably. Don't worry, I'm claiming it. But he would say like, if you're walking in the room and you're nervous and you're feeling like, and possibly is like, you gotta walk in there like you're supposed to be in there. Cause if you walk in there like you're supposed to be in there, then nobody's going to judge you. But if you're sitting there thinking and second guessing, then that energy you're giving off that energy. So you always say like, you gotta walk in with that positive mindset and walk yourself. So I would say it's, it's, it's tough, but I would say for, you know, young people out there looking for mentors, just go ask somebody. Say, hey, I want to learn from you. Can I get an opportunity to learn from you? And sometimes you're going to get a yes, and a lot of times you're going to get a no. So I would say, reach out to whoever you want to reach out to and emulate and take notes and, and figure out that person you want to be when you grow up.
So you said that you had a lot of women mentors in your, you had like, and TV. So when you first had your, like, like when you first got your mentor, like when you're older, like what were the differences between like the women that you had when you were younger and the TV versus like when you were like, met the, the ones you said, were you able to, he's able to show you the politics and how it really is?
Well, you said, what are the difference between like the TV? And then the real life mentors, women and men? I mean, TV is, I mean, TV is TV. I mean, for me, TV was my escape as a kid, right? I would watch TV all the time, which I don't encourage all the time. But there's some good that can come of it, especially in any situation. So I think from that is just, it was just seeing these larger than life characters. Like, all right, how do I like, like that's cool, you know? But there's only so much you can, you can't ask them questions, right? You can't talk to them. You can only see what you see. And you don't know what's behind that. You don't know what made them have that personality. But in the real world, you can ask questions, right? With your real life mentors. And you know, I was blessed to have, you know, my first job was given to me by my stepsister, uh, woman. She gave me my first job. I worked at McDonald's for four years in high school and I worked hard. I've had several women, you know, after that. And so for them, it's, it's them nurturing, nurturing me. You know, when I was kind of straying off the side, wanting to rebel and do other, they like pull me back in, right? So it's like kind of that motherly nurturing, um, you know, and, and caring for others. I think I learned a lot, you know, from them. But yeah, I think the big difference with TV and real life is you can ask them questions and they can check you when you're not doing right. Which TV can do. At the end of the day, like, you know, these Hollywood actors and people that make millions of dollars, but do they really care about Jose Delgado? You know, one of my favorite movies is A Bronx Tale. And there's a scene in there where he's, uh, where one of the main characters, uh, kind of mobster, he's talking to the little kid who's kind of like his, his mentor. And he loves the Yankees and the kids are all distraught. He's like, you know, you know, Mickey Mantle, you know, probably had a bad game or whatever, but if your dad loses his job and you're saying you can't pay the rent, is he going to care? Right? So you know, he talks about, you know, just like making sure that like, you know, those folks at the end of the day may not care about you, you know? And I'm not saying that that's what all athletes, but I'm just saying in general, it puts in perspective all this time and investment we put in sports and stuff like that. So I take what I take from the TV and, you know, take a lot more from experience and hands-on. Kind of like what you're doing here with the podcast, right? Like this hands-on experience is like valuable, touching feeling, doing the interviews. I mean, I hated public speaking and I still do, and I have to do it all the time. But you know, I had people that pushed me, say, you gotta do it. And I kind of faced my fears too. I think a lot of it is facing, facing fears that you have and not letting those fears stop you. And so for me, public speaking was one of those big ones. Even doing something like this where I'm like saying, like, I'm like, you want to talk to me? Wait. So.
So you said like, walking into a room with confidence versus like maybe being nervous? It's like, what are some ways that you're able to walk into rooms feeling confident, even though you might not really feel that confident sometimes?
It's the saying like fake it till you make it. Um, I think a big part of that is how you dress. You know, wearing suits was not something I did when I was younger. So, you know, first time I put an actual suit on, I think I got, my first suit was donated to me in college by one of the VPs who saw me at a job fair with a hoodie on. He was like, what are you doing, kid? Right? He's like, you're about my size. I gave him my first suit. And so for me, like wearing a suit, like there's something about dressing well that like you stand up straighter, right? You walk different. So I think part of it is, is your, is how you dress. But a lot of it is mental. Is you're walking in there, you're afraid like, I don't know nobody in here. On top of that, like, you know, I'm a person of color walking in a room that a lot of rooms were, were not people of color, right? And I was also at that time in my early twenties, right? 22, 23, 24. And I'm walking in rooms that there's nobody there that's younger than 40, right? So I had all these things like, all right, like I don't know these people, a little bit of imposter syndrome setting in. And so part of it is just walking in and just going up, introducing yourself to somebody. Say, how you doing? I'm Jose. What do you do? Right? And just starting that conversation, which is probably the hardest thing for people to do is networking. But like the more you do it, the easier it gets. I don't think it's like easy, but it's, you know, so for me, it's walking in with confidence. You know, in your mindset, you know, fake it till you make it, you dress, but also forcing yourself to go talk to people. Cause you might, you might think that nobody wants to talk to you, but you don't know, they might have just as interesting story as you and they might have some similarities as you. And so that's what helped me in the beginning. Um, and then once you start walking in a room and you go to these meetings again, later on, you start seeing some of the same people and you're like, all right, like now I know two people that I met from last time, they're here. Now I can go talk to them and then have them introduce me to more people. And then you just gotta walk in like you, like you're supposed to be there.
So you said that you're like, when you first started, you're, nobody was like really your age and you're like one of the only people of color. So like, what was your, what was your thought process then when you're seeing that nobody was your age and nobody was like, just looked like you?
I was questioning what I was doing. I'm like, am I doing the right thing? But then part of me was like, you know what? I learned this concept of, you know, because I talked about wanting to go to New York City, right? And everybody, a lot of my friends when they were graduating, they were going to Boston. They were going to New York. They were going to big cities. There's this idea of, um, being, there's this like being a small fish in a big pond. And I started to think, but what if it was the reverse and I could be a big fish in a small pond, right? So like, I looked at it initially as like, man, I'm the, I'm the only one on the 40. But then I was like, maybe that's uh, an advantage I have because there's no young people in there. There's no, none of that perspective. And so for me, I started thinking, well, maybe I could be a big fish in a little pond and maybe these folks may need me. Even though I don't have a job or I'm like, you know, but, and so for me, I think that was the biggest piece for me is, 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 repeat the question one more time.
Okay. So.
Cause I get off in tangents, so.
What was your thought process like when you first were walking into these rooms?
Got it. Yeah. So that was, that was it. It was like, should I be here? Should I not be here? And then I thought about, well, maybe, maybe this is an advantage for me, right? And maybe, you know, I could be that big fish in a small pond. It's almost, it's almost like when I was getting my degree, like I had family members, I had friends that didn't go get the degrees. A lot of times I was like the only person of color. A lot of times I was frustrated, like why am I getting this degree? Right? Like I, I know people that are making tons of money. They're, I'm busting my butt in school and they're making money now. But when you go back to that short-term, long-term conversation I had, like in the long-term, the degree worked out for me. Although when the recession hit and I couldn't find a job and I had this degree, I was frustrated. I was like, everybody says, go to college, go to college. I got my degree. I couldn't find it. I was so frustrated, but, but in the long-term, it, it, it set me apart, right? There weren't as many people coming out into the area that I was looking at with degrees. So I think it, it set me apart.
So you, you like to talk about the, how you always have like a long-term outlook on things? Like why, why is that?
Just the nature of how I grew up. Um, I think that's a really great question. I have to do some self, self-analyzation. But I think for me is, is having, you know, growing up with not having a lot of stuff. And having a dream like, oh, one day I'm gonna, I'm gonna be able to do this. Like I remember as a kid, I couldn't, we couldn't afford a basketball hoop. I lived in the projects. And so we got a milk crate, cut the bottom of the milk crate up and, and hammered it to a tree. But one of my goals, like one day when I'm bigger, I'm gonna, I'm gonna buy my own basketball hoop, right? Like there's these little things that you don't have when you're a kid and you see other folks having it. You see TV, even the schools I went to. Elementary school, these kids riding their bikes to their, their schools and, and I couldn't do that, right? So for me, it was always like, I'm going to have that one day. I'm going to have that. So I guess it's the extra motivation is work hard for that one day that I can get that. So I think that's where a lot of it comes from is like, I'm going to accomplish that. I'm going to have my own house. I'm going to have my own pool, right? So when I bought my house, one of the first things I did, I bought a basketball hoop. And it was like, I got my own basketball hoop. My son probably doesn't understand the significance of it, but for me, you know, it, it's like, it's almost those little things like you're doing a good job, you're making it, right? And so for me, I think that's where kind of my long-term stuff always is like, all right, I'm planning for this. I do think there's a downside to that. I do think if you're always looking ahead and you're always thinking about the next thing, there's a downside of not living in the moment. And appreciating what you have now. And I think that's another thing that I think I could do better is like, how do I appreciate what I have now? Even folks that, you know, are complaining about what they don't have, there's a lot of things we could be appreciative, you know? Hopefully folks have good health, right? You have family or you have friends, right? There's always something that we could turn to and appreciate now. And so, so I gotta do better than that. But for me, it's always, it's always like, all right, it's the next thing. Cause I'm always moving my, my goal, right? Like I hit this now, push that goalpost a little bit further. And it's always pushing myself and challenging myself, I think is why I'm always in the long-term.
So how are you? So how are you, how are you able to look and chase your short-term goals as well?
Uh, it's, it's, it's defining kind of what's important to me at that moment. So I do have short-term goals and, and, and I'm always looking at like, like, you know, try to, at, at least every year, try to figure out like. What is something I wanna accomplish this year? Even if it's something as small as like, go kayaking, right? Like, for my own san- sanity, right? Um, it's, it's putting stuff down. And, and not getting lost too much in the big stuff, cause the big stuff takes a while and you gotta be super patient. So how do you get small wins in between? To help you get there. So it's like breaking up your goals into smaller things, um, but also having things that are just like, quick wins. So, how do I do it? I guess some people do vision boards, right? Like, I just have like ideas of stuff that I wanna accomplish, like. One of the things I've always wanted to do since I was a little kid, but we couldn't afford music lessons, was like, I wanna learn how to play the piano. I haven't given myself the time, cause I've been so busy and trying to get things done and staying busy and not full-time jobs, city council now and, and other things and. Boards and I'm on, but it's like, I gotta remember to do things for myself. And so like, I gotta put that in there. I gotta make time. And what I've learned over time is that time is the most valuable resource. And you probably have heard that too, right? And so as you get older, you know, when you're young in your twenties, like I, I got all. I got all my whole life to figure stuff. I got a whole life to do this and that. But as you get older, especially now I have kids that are getting older. I have a thirteen-year-old and a soon-to-be nine-year-old. My son is five years from graduating, right? You just graduated, right? Congratulations, right? So I'm thinking, I only got so much time with him. So making sure that I'm being intentional with my time with my kids, with myself, with my wife, with my community. So I think for me, it's, it's, it's that, right? It's just focusing on those things while I, while I can have control, so.
So speaking of that, I actually wanna ask you, how are you able to balance work with family time as well?
That is always a challenge. I don't think there's a perfect recipe. I've asked other people. Um, who are like, I view as like, successful and it's a challenge, but it's, it's, it's. Making the time, scheduling stuff into your busy calendar and making sure you make time for it. So I will say, I was never good at it, um, initially, but I've gotten a lot better. Um, and so for me, it's, I use a calendar religiously. I schedule stuff in just so that I make sure that I, I, I stick to that, like, cause if you just say, oh, I wanna do this on Saturday. But you don't actually schedule in your calendar, your calendar doesn't remind you, you can get lost with the ten thousand other things that you're doing. Um, so for me, it's, it's, it's making sure that I also have to learn how to say no to things as well. Um, I was one of those people that always said yes things, yep, I'll do it. Yeah, I'll do it, sure, why not? Cause I always wanna help. But it got to a point where like. I've been told by people like, you don't have to do that. You don't have to show up at every community meeting, even though you feel you need to be there. So you gotta learn to say no, and you gotta schedule stuff in your calendar. Um, and prioritize what's the most important things for you.
So the, for the final question I wanna ask you is, what's one fun fact about yourself that nobody really knows about?
One fun fact, those are always the tough ones for me. Um, fun fact. You know what's funny? Cause I don't see myself as fun. So if somebody asks me, what's fun? Um, I mean, I think some of the things I've been able to do, like, I, I mentioned my internship in New York City. Um, I got to intern for a company called Rush Communications, which is owned by Russell Simmons. So like, that was like a really cool experience, fun fact. Like, I got to like work in New York City. I got to like work with folks in the entertainment industry. I got to go to the Hamptons and go to events and, you know. I thought that was a pretty fun fact. Um, another fun fact is, I like to dance. I'm not a good dancer, but I like to dance. Um, and it's, and there's not, at least, I don't know, maybe it's my Puerto Rican heritage or whatever, but like. We like to dance, but like, when you grow up in places, men, men are like, no, we're macho, we don't dance, no. So I like dancing, I like having a good time, I like, you know, being silly. Um, you know, when you're an elected official, you gotta be serious, you gotta, nah, I like, I'm, I'm just a normal person, man. Um, and I like to learn. I'm always learning. I love to learn new stuff. So I guess. Those are my, my corny responses to something fun about me.
So thank you for being able to come on today. I appreciate you taking the time out of your day to allow me to, uh, have a conversation with you, so thank you.
Well, for sure, man. I really appreciate, you know, you having me. Um, I really like what you're doing. I think we need to promote entrepreneurship a lot more. I think that, you know, you know, I talked about the college degree thing, and I think, you know, degrees are great to get your stuff. But I think we're not talking enough about how do we get folks with, you know, teaching entrepreneur skills, getting folks in trades. In different senses, because college is not for everybody. Like what you're doing here, especially for our young people and showing that like you can do stuff, I think is, is cool. And I'd love to see a lot more of that in our city. Um, promoting that, especially entrepreneurship, because again, we live in an area in a city where there's a lot of people that are creative. They got the skill sets, but they've never been pushed or shown that they could do something like this. So like, the fact that you're doing this and your book, like congratulations, man. Like, this is awesome, like, like, you got a book, man, like, that's, that's huge.
Thank you.
You're what, eighteen?
Yes.
So no, thank you for having me. I really appreciate it, yeah.
Thank you for coming, so.
Sure.
Hey guys, thanks for, thank you for watching this episode of the Real Six C O Podcast. You guys are amazing.